Linda, could you give us the vocation this evening?
Psalms eighty-six five, "You, Lord, are forgiving and good, abounding in love for all who call on you." Exodus fourteen fourteen, "The Lord will fight for you; you need only be still." Thank you, Lord, for your promises, your love, your goodness, your provisions, and your protection. We trust in your presence and guidance during this meeting. And I pray, Lord, that everyone here will enter into the business of this meeting with a thankful heart because of who you are. Thank you, God. We know that you have a destiny for this city. It's evident in the name Freeport. We call forth the destiny of this town, Freeport, and its people, and we will not let go, we will not give up. We will be intentional, and we have a purpose. Father, thank you that the destiny of the city is victory, victory in relationships, families, and marriages, victory in businesses, victory in our organizations and safety measures, victory in our spiritual walk, victory in health, and victory in finances. Father, we trust you to show us that the business of this city council, instead of disappointments, there will be divine appointments. Instead of discouragement, there will be faith and determination to not quit. Lord, when we are fearful, replace fear with forgiveness and compassion. Father, we ask for insightful ideas, strategic plans, cheerful givers, committed workers, and finances to implement. We ask you to extend your hand of mercy and kindness to our city and all of our people. Thank you, God, and we praise your holy name always.
Thank you, Linda. So now we will officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alderman Bourneman.
Here.
McLanathan.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Busker.
Here.
Brashaw.
Here.
Mysick.
Here.
And Berberay.
Here.
And then if you could please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Parker.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we will start with item number one. It's the approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Mysick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item number two is the approval of the minutes from the council meeting for July first, 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Busker for the approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Public comment? We have none. So we will move on to item number four, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be routine in nature and will be acted as one unless there's a member of the council would like to have something removed. The consent agenda consists of, A, the approval and to place on file Rebecca Motley's Greater Freeport Partnership Monthly Report dated for June twenty-six, 2019, building report permits for June 2019, cash and investment reports, June thirtieth, 2019, financial reports for the general fund, library, water, sanitary sewer, and the storm sewer funds for January, I'm sorry, June, I'm way off on this, June thirtieth, 2019. The approval of finance bills payable in the total of one million forty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars twenty-eight cents and for the payroll for pay period ending July sixth, 2019, in the amount of five hundred and sixty-two thousand seventeen dollars thirty cents. Is there a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Mysick for, right, oh, Berberay, I'm sorry, Berberay, for the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bourneman.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
And Ross.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Looks like they might be pointing at a few members here that would like to, actually, if you'd like to turn and go this way, that way the camera can see you, and then Jane can take some photos afterwards, and I think, doesn't she want to be in the picture? I don't think she does. Anyway, W., come in, fool. I think there's a tape. So anyway, on behalf of the city, we'd like to make the following proclamation. Whereas Kiwanis International is one of the largest service organizations in the world with more than five hundred and fifty thousand members of all ages and abilities in more than eighty nations, and whereas the members of the Freeport Kiwanis Club are devoted to improving the world one child and one community at a time by giving value to the human and spiritual rather than the material values of life. And whereas, in addition to improving the lives of children in Freeport and the community around the world, Kiwanis Club members promote the development of community leaders, positive role models, intercultural understanding and cooperation, and opportunities for fellowship, personal growth, professional development, and community service. And whereas the first Kiwanis Club started its service in Detroit, Michigan, in nineteen fifteen, and the Freeport Kiwanis Club was formed on July twenty-fifth, nineteen nineteen, and whereas the service provided by the Freeport Kiwanis Club will continue to have a positive impact in our community and our citizens. Now therefore, I, Jody Miller, Mayor of the City of Freeport, in commemoration of the one hundred year of service to the Freeport community, do hereby proclaim July twenty-fifth, 2019, as Kiwanis International Day and hereby call upon all citizens of Freeport thereof to render support to the members of this organization and to make themselves aware of the Kiwanis Internationals, whose members this day are providing meaningful service to homes, schools, and the community. So congratulations on one of them. Okay, we will go on to item number six, which is the second reading of ordinance twenty nineteen thirty-seven. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
An ordinance amending City of Freeport Code of Ordinances Title VI Administration, Chapter two forty, Police Departments, Section two forty point zero nine, Appointments, Subsection H, Residency Requirements. And amending City of Freeport Code of Ordinances Title VI Administration, Chapter two forty-two, Fire Departments, Section two forty-two point twenty-five, City Residence.
Thank you. Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe that we have discussed this in detail over several, last several meetings, so if there are any questions, we're standing by to answer them as we go forward. So I have nothing further to add on this.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Bourneman.
I would, in order to eliminate some ambiguity of the way the statute's ordered, I'm going to make a motion to amend the wording of the statute in the following manner, which would be under Section three, Subparagraph C, little, a Roman numeral, Paragraph three, so if we're all there. At that point, where it says, and this is going to apply to both fire and police, this specific addition here, it says, "Such police officer or in the fire, case of the fire department firefighter, may maintain their residence," so it's going to say "their" and then "established residence", and then the newer language is "as of the effective date of the ordinance." And that would be the extent of my amendment.
You said that's three C, which one?
Three.
Roman numeral three.
Three on police and fire, it would be the same thing. Would be three, Section C, under three. So established residency as of the date.
Their established residence as of the effective date of this ordinance.
So we have a motion made by Alderman Bourneman, as so stated. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Question for Alderman Bourneman. Alderman Bourneman, I don't believe there's any change here. It's more of a clarification. Is that correct?
That's how I would put it. It just gives it a more, less, I guess it gives it a less ambiguous reading, and I think it clarifies the ordinance, that exception under the Roman numeral three.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Mr. Bourneman, could you, just for the listening audience and for myself, could you read that subsection three in its entirety with the change added?
So as I said, they're going to be similar here. So in the case of a promotion to one of the ranks and/or titles listed in subsection B, Roman numeral I of this section, so by a firefighter or police officer who was a member of the fire department or police department prior to the effective date of the ordinance codified in this section, such firefighter or police officer may maintain their established residence as of the effective date of this ordinance, provided that such residence is within, for, fire department would be twenty miles within City Hall. For the police department, it would be twenty-five miles from the police station. And to conclude, it is, however, in the event that the employee firefighter or police officer moves, that individual must comply with the fifteen mile radius residency requirements of this section. And this section's obviously dealing with promotions to the ranks of officers, so it would apply to individuals being promoted.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Alderman Bourneman, thank you for that, the reading, and for adding that extra language so that I could understand it and make sure that the listening audience can as well.
You're welcome.
So it doesn't change anything? It just brings a little greater clarity?
Yes.
I agree.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment only? Well then, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the passage of the amendment?
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Bourneman.
Aye.
I am sorry. I meant Berberay. And Bourneman.
Aye.
McLanathan. And Ross. The amendment passes eight to zero.
Okay, so now counsel before you is the amended version of ordinance twenty nineteen thirty-seven. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bourneman.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
And Ross. And the motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, item number seven is the first reading of ordinance twenty nineteen thirty-nine. Could you please read this?
Ordinance amending Section four eighty point one one one, prohibited parking streets of the codified ordinances of Freeport.
Director Carr.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. In the last few months, several parking issues have come across from either other department heads or citizens or Alderman, or when, that I've got in front of you in this ordinance, four different locations, or three different locations, four different additions to the ordinance, the first of which is on Empire Street, just east of Park. Essentially, it's between Park and Benson. On the south side of the road, there's a little, there's like one striped out parking spot right now. So if there were to be a person that parks in there, if there's enough people going straight or taking a left from Empire on to the Creek Park entrance or through to Pearl City Road, it can cause a little bit of congestion there, head and knees bound. So this, this section of the ordinance is to take care of that. It eliminates that parking spot, so we wouldn't have to worry about that shifting back across the center line and the potential for either a sideswipe or a head-on collision there. The next one on the list is the intersection of Hancock and Stevenson. It's come to my attention that when there are semi-traffic, the semis, when they're trying to turn from seventy-five on to Hancock, the trailer swing can cause issues with that southwest quadrant of the intersection. There's currently not even enough room to park on Hancock, or on Stevenson right there, but there is a vehicle that tends to park there illegally. They do block. They're within the five feet of their driveway. They actually park in front of their driveway. So when that car illegally parks there, the trailer swing would actually hit that vehicle, so they have to swing all the way out and around to the next lane. So any vehicle that's at, on Hancock trying to turn on Stevenson, then you just get a queue of semis waiting for that car to get out of the way. So that, that part of the ordinance, or that part of the ordinance is, I'm trying to clarify that. So it removes parking along Stevenson and it removes parking along Hancock right there in that southwest quadrant. The next one is on La Cresta. This one was, this one was a little bit tough. When, when the phone call came in, kind of going out there without, without getting clear instructions on what is going on and what is happening, you really don't see it out there. But what the issue is, is when two cars park opposite of each other on La Cresta, since there are two stop signs at the ends, a demeter kind of creates a one-way tunnel that's two blocks long. So if enough people park on the north and south side, the people that are at the stop sign have to wait for that vehicle to take two blocks before it can actually get out and go around. So by removing the parking on just the one side of La Cresta here, we eliminate that issue of it turning into a one-way street between the demeters. The staff is requesting essentially the restrictions in these three areas, on Empire Street, from Park Boulevard, two hundred feet to the east, on Stevenson, from Hancock, fifty feet west, on La Cresta, between the two demeter intersections, and then on Hancock from Stevenson Street, fifty feet south.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Director Carr, I thank you for clarifying the parking situation on Empire Street near Benson and Park. I do know that that can be bottlenecked at times. I travel that route quite often, and it is in my, on the edge of my ward, I should say, not actually in my ward. And I know there are so many cars coming and going and so many children crossing the road there, so I truly believe that is a public safety issue as you intended. La Cresta, I know, is also a very, very heavily trafficked road at times, with people zooming back and forth through there as a shortcut. I, the only question I have for you is regarding this. You're having people then eliminate the parking on the south side? Isn't that the side that most of the houses are on, or do I have it wrong?
There are more driveways on the south side, so there would be less parking available on the south side.
So that's why you eliminate it on the south side rather than the north side? Is that correct?
Yes, that is why.
It, will that be, I'm sorry, can I continue? Will that be a hardship to anybody that lives in one of those houses, or do we have anybody that has opposed to it? Do you send out any kind of notice to the individuals?
I did not send out any notices. I do know, when you look at all the driveways on the south side of the road, they're all quite long. So there would be plenty of parking, if not in their, in their driveway, up next to their garages or houses, but to the extent of their driveway.
I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mayor.
Alderman Ross.
Okay, Director Carr, when it comes to Hancock and Stevenson, when it comes to Hancock and Stevenson, on Stevenson at Hancock, going south on Hancock, how far up will you be posting signs or painting the curb yellow?
We will have, no parking from here to the corner sign, as well as we'll paint the curb yellow.
Okay, and then what about on Hancock itself?
Yep.
Same thing?
Yep, there'll be sides on, there'll be a sign on both Hancock and Stevenson.
Good. And as Alderman Brashaw said, did you, are we going to send anything out?
I can let this one homeowner know.
Yep, that would be great. Thank you.
Any further discussion, counsel?
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. Looking at the Empire, in between Park and Benson, two hundred feet, how far, or how close, I guess, to Benson does that get? Just looking at your picture here, how far are we extending?
That gets us to the driveway there, that's on the south side of the road, if you're familiar with that. There's a, there's one driveway that kind of sits between Empire and Benson that gets us, or between Park and Benson that gets us in the middle of that driveway. So there would be no parking essentially between that driveway and Park.
Follow-up, Mayor. And going back to the demeter routes, as you indicated, there are a fair amount of driveways in there, pretty long. Are there any impacted residences on the south side of demeter, between, or south side of the crest, and between demeter and demeter that do not have driveways that you're aware of?
I believe they all have driveways.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Alderman Bourneman.
Thank you. Director Carr, how did the issue on La Cresta come to your attention?
There's a homeowner that lives in between that split that says she sees it all the time. So going out there the first time, I believe the chief and I both went out and kind of looked, but there was only parking on, there was only a vehicle parked on the one side, and so when we'd taken that picture, we'd assumed that there would be plenty of room, and it wasn't until the situation arose, or that she explained to me, before I could actually witness what I thought was going to happen and then actually see it in person.
Okay, can I follow up? So I take that road very often. It's on the outskirts of my ward, and it is an issue when there's cars on both sides. What type of steps are we going to take to give the residents notice that this is happening? Are we going to contact those homes specifically on La Cresta?
Yes, we can send out mailers.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Busker.
Seeing this is, this is kind of impacting public safety. Are you, you fine with this holding over to the next meeting, or is this something you'd like to see moved for tonight?
I'd like to give the residents at least an opportunity to see it before it gets put into effect.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
I'd like to make a motion to move ordinance twenty nineteen dash thirty-nine forward to the next meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion, counsel?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, just for the listening public, since this is, two of these streets are either in or very near my ward, feel free to reach out with, out to me. My contact information's on the Facebook, the Facebook, the city, city website. I don't, don't actually have Facebook, but the city website, I'd be happy to hear your position on it. I'm going to vote for it, so if you have a concern, please reach out to me before the next meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Busker to move ordinance twenty nineteen thirty-nine on to the next regularly scheduled meeting. And if I could please remind the counsel to get closer to their microphones, we've had lots of complaints lately that the viewing audience can't hear you. So we'll move on to item number eight, which is the first reading of ordinance twenty nineteen forty. Could you please read this?
An ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Freeport in relation to multiple recently annexed properties.
Thank you. Director Zupkov.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is regarding the properties that were recently annexed into the city that were previously in the unincorporated areas that were completely surrounded by the city. We initially, as staff, compiled the recommendations of what these properties should be zoned as in the city, and the criteria that was considered when making those recommendations included what the properties were zoned as in Stevenson County, what the tax assessed use of the property is, and driving by each property to see the use firsthand, and comparing all that to find the most suitable city zoning classification. Additionally, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on June thirteenth, that was continued July eleventh, in which all the affected property owners were invited to attend and give their feedback on the recommendations. Plus, the ZBA gave their input on the recommendations at their meeting on July eleventh. And in front of you tonight are the final recommendations, which consider the initial staff research, input from property owners, input from the Planning Commission and ZBA. The ZBA voted five to nothing and Planning Commission, seven to nothing, to recommend this zoning, and we would ask for approval of these zoning recommendations.
Thank you. Counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. I already know the answer to this, but for the listening public, Manager Crowe, could you let us know how many have been contacted and in what way were they allowed to air their opinions on this?
So all of the residents were contacted and let, let known that we were having a public hearing. The first public hearing, we had five residents show up, and then some of them in turn met with Director Zupkov throughout, and then we had one additional member show up at the second hearing, the continuation of the hearing at the second meeting, and expressed their concern as we went forward and actually gave input into this. Additionally, we did publish in the paper that we were holding these hearings with our, with the staff recommendation for zoning on each one of these properties.
Madam Mayor, thank you. And in your opinion, did all the, did all the constituents get their questions answered to their satisfaction, and they are somewhat satisfied with the outcome of all this?
Somewhat satisfied, that, they all got their questions answered and addressed, and whether they're somewhat satisfied, that, that I can't answer.
I do apologize. I spoke to a few of them that seemed satisfied, so I probably should have worded that slightly differently.
We do have one property that, one property owner, which we are still addressing some concerns with him, and, and that, I reached out again to that property owner today. There is a concern that Attorney Cox, who's been working this, has with one of the requested zoning that he would like on one of his properties, and we're trying to clarify that before the next final second reading on the property.
Madam Mayor. Manager Crowe, I want to thank you for reaching out to everyone and for you too, Mr. Zupkov, for having these extra meetings and making sure that our constituents that did have this forceful annexation could voice their opinions, ask their questions, and hopefully be somewhat satisfied in the end. Thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. Outside of the one that you said you're still attempting to contact to make sure that everything is all squared away and on all ends, were there still some, when you say somewhat satisfied, I don't know if you're talking about the process as a whole or about, I'm specifically talking about the zoning portion of it. Were there still some questions or concerns in regards to why something was going to be zoned one way, or have those all been resolved?
I think they were satisfied, the ones that showed up, what they didn't underst, what many of them didn't understand is that the zoning that many of them had coming out of the county, so part of this, was we had to educate them on what the county zoning was and that we have less zoning codes than the county does, so we tried to find the best fit in relationship to what they wanted and also what we had on our codes. An example is the county has two ag zonings and we only have one, so that, and then they have fourteen residential zonings, and we only have seven, so we had, we fitted as best as they could, and we used those explanations. So that's why I'm saying they're, they're satisfied that we met their needs, but as, as we went forward.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion, counsel? Is there a motion to move it forward?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Berberay to move ordinance twenty nineteen forty to the next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number nine is the first reading of ordinance twenty nineteen forty-one. Could you please read this?
An ordinance granting a variance from Section twelve seventy point zero three pertaining to maximum height of fences in rear yards for property located at
to maximum height of fences in re- uh, rear yards for property located at five hundred West South Street in Freeport.
Thank you, Director Zupkov.
Thank you, your honor, uh, some of the background on this, Precision Landscape is applying for a variance to construct a seven and a half foot tall fence, that's taller than the six foot limit permitted by our city code, at five hundred West South Street, which is owned by the Morse Group, we believe this proposed variance compares favorably with the city's required standards for variance and the, uh, La Salle Sinclair factors for land use that we must consider when making decisions like this. As far as the variance standards, uh, the proposed variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the city of Freeport zoning code, uh, the fence will be aesthetically pleasing and will match the seven and a half foot fence and the generator's screening that's already on the property, uh, strict enforcement of the city's zoning code would resolve in practical difficulties or impose exceptional hardships due to special and unusual conditions, which are not generally found on other properties in the same zoning district. The property owner wishes to build onto a pre-existing fence, which is seven and a half feet tall, adding onto that fence will allow for a uniform fence at this property and should not impose a hardship on neighbors, the property could not yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed in the zoning code, the property owner seeks this variance to construct a fence that will enhance the curb appeal of the property, the plight of the ownership of the property is due to unique circumstances, the property already has fencing of this requested height, and having a fence that matches the existing fencing and height would look best, if the variance is granted, it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood and will not be a substantial detriment to adjacent property, the fence matches the fence already existing at this property, what should not, uh, harm any of the neighbors, the, and the La Salle Sinclair factors, the existing uses of nearby properties are similar to the proposed one, the fence will match the one already existing on this property and blend in with the South Street Business Quarter, uh, property values of nearby parcels are not likely to be diminished by this proposed use, the developer says the proposal is for an aesthetically pleasing wooden fence that should not diminish the look of the property or affect neighboring property values, relative hardship is not likely to be imposed on adjacent or nearby property owners by reason of the proposed use, the fence would not negatively affect views of neighboring property owners and aims to eliminate noise coming from a nearby parking area, the property is well suited for the proposed use, the proportions of the property are well suited for this size of fence, and the proposed fence is within the required setbacks from the property line, the property is not vacant, there is a public need for the proposed use, the fence would screen public view, public view and noise from a nearby parking area, and the city of Freeport has thoroughly planned and zoned its land use for the comprehensive plan dated April fifth of twenty ten, and the proposed use is contemplated by such a plan, the comprehensive plan notes the importance of economic development and additional investment occurring at Freeport's commercial properties and businesses, and we would ask for approval of this variance request.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you, looks like it impacts maybe four lots, twenty to twenty through twenty-three on, on the diagram that was on the memo, uh, for this, um, have, and I assume with the application on this, there was, um, notice given to the, uh, those adjoining owners, did we get any feedback from them on this?
No, n- no feedback, none of the adjoining owners for this petition showed up at the ZBA or planning commission.
Okay, um, follow up, mayor, and when you say it's gonna be added to an existing fence, are you talking about the seven and a half foot enclosed shed that's i- in, in a portion of this, or is it something else?
Yeah, they have their, um, their generator there, and, and I believe there's, there's an email included, he sent a picture of it, and way back in the corner you can see screening around the generator, that's seven and a half feet tall, they're gonna connect this to that, and it'll be, it'll be the same height as that.
Follow up, mayor, do you know were there any prior complaints in regards to noise, either from the generator or from the parking lots, uh, from those neighboring residents?
Uh, none, none that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, council?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you, Alderman Busker just jumped at it, he made a motion to move it forward, and I'll second that.
If there's no further discussion, there's a, a motion on the floor made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Brashaw, to move ordinance twenty nineteen forty-one onto the next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number ten is the first reading of ordinance twenty nineteen forty-two, madam clerk, could you please read this?
An ordinance granting a variance from section twelve fifty-four D pertaining to front and side yards for property located at three thirty-seven, three zero two dat- uh, all the way through, three sixty, three sixty-eight, and three eighty South Hancock Avenue.
Thank you, Director Zupkov.
Thank you, your honor, uh, Keystone Energy Solar has an interconnection agreement with ComEd to construct solar arrays at the city's wastewater treatment plant located at three thirty-seven South Hancock and the rest of the city-owned lots adjacent to the plant, in order to maximize energy efficiency at the plant, uh, the company estimates the solar arrays will reduce energy usage at the plant by approximately sixty-four percent in order to maximize the efficiency of the solar arrays, the city seeking a variance from its twenty-foot setback for M two on the northeast side of Hancock Avenue and from the thirty-foot front yard setback for M three on the southwest side of Hancock Avenue, and we believe this proposed variance compares favorably with our required standards for variance and the La Salle Sinclair factors for land use, the proposed variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the city of Freeport zoning code, solar arrays of all types are a permitted use in the city's manufacturing zoned areas, this proposal efficiently lays out solar arrays around the existing wastewater facility, strict enforcement of the city zoning code would resolve in practical difficulties or impose exceptional hardships due to special and unusual conditions, which are not generally found on other properties in the same zoning district, due to much of this property already being built out with our wastewater treatment plant, the variance is necessary to provide the number of solar panels needed to maximize energy efficiency, the project would not be nearly as energy efficient without the variance, the property could not yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed in the zoning code, with this variance, the wastewater treatment plan will be approximately sixty-four percent more energy efficient, the development would be much less efficient with fewer solar panels without this variance, the plight of the ownership is due to unique circumstances, due to large manufacturing zone setbacks, which are actually the largest in the city, and other developments surrounding the wastewater treatment plant, this variance is the only way to maximize the efficiency of this solar development, and if the variance is granted, it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood and will not be a substantial detriment to adjacent property, solar arrays of all kinds are permitted use in manufacturing zoned districts, and this is a manufacturing zone portion of Freeport, the solar panels will provide no visual or noise detriment to surrounding property owners, the La Salle Sinclair factors, the existing uses of nearby property are similar to the proposed one, sim- uh, solar arrays are permitted use in all manufacturing districts, and the surrounding properties are largely manufacturing uses, property values of nearby parcels are not likely to be diminished by the proposed use, the solar arrays provide no visual or audio intrusions to neighboring properties and are in line with nearby manufacturing uses, relative hardship is not likely to be imposed on adjacent or nearby property owners by reason of the proposed use, the solar arrays will fit the manufacturing character of the neighborhood and should have no adverse effects on adjacent property owners, the property is well suited for the proposed use, solar arrays are permitted use in all manufacturing districts, the property is not vacant, there is a public need for the proposed use, the proposed solar array development will reduce energy costs for the city, and the city of Freeport has thoroughly planned and zoned its land use for the comprehensive plan dated April fifth of twenty ten, the proposed use is contemplated by such a plan, the comprehensive plan encourages the use of green energy technologies, including solar, we would ask for approval of this variance request.
Questions, council?
Mayor.
Alderman.
In the plans, is the, is any of the solar array, um, equipment planned within a floodway?
No, it is, it is, there is some flood plain, but this is not planned in the floodway, the floodway does not exist on the side of the wastewater treatment facility, Hancock Treatment Facility, these are strictly, uh, flood plains, not floodways, and these will be elevated up out of the, if there are any along the edge of the river.
Your honor, make a motion to move this forward.
Second.
Okay, so is there further discussion?
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you, uh, looking at the three areas that you've got there, one, the river's the only one that could complain, I guess, on that one, uh, and then we got the other one that's bordered on an alley, um, looking at the one that on the, on the map that you, you gave, um, it's kind of on the right-hand side, it's near the Stevenson Service Company building, um, I, I can't tell from the measurements, but, um, is there any encroachments on the, on the current setbacks, um, for that portion, or is that within the already established, uh, um, measurements?
Are you talking about near the southeast side there, close to the building?
Um, if you look, if, looking on it, um...
The, the encroachment, um, south of Hancock is only towards the road, I, I believe you're, I believe you're talking about that small one there, that's the farthest east by Stevenson Service, um, that?
Yes.
Yep, that does not encroach towards them, the only, um, the only variance on that side of the street is, is towards the right of way.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, there's another property that's owned along the side yard, the side of, down here on the wastewater treatment facility, it's currently, uh, just storied, that that's the area that they're encroaching on there, um, and in fact, they're going to replace the fence along that line, uh, as they go forward.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, council? Seeing none, we have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Busker, to move ordinance twenty nineteen forty-two onto the next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number eleven is the adoption of resolution twenty nineteen thirty-three, madam clerk, could you please read this?
Resolution of the city of Freeport authorizing and approving an agreement with Willett Hoffman to provide roadway design engineering services for the Adams Avenue project from Clark to South Streets.
Thank you, Director Carr.
Yes, thank you, madam mayor, um, last week at the, the committee of the whole, we discussed the Adams Street project, um, both the utility design as well as the roadway design, um, just as a, as a quick reminder, since we were using motor fuel tax, I dot did not require us to use the, the, our state mandated QBS procedure, so we did not have to request a bunch of qualifications and do any kind of grading, um, instead they allowed us to pick a firm that the city has a positive history with, um, with doing that, we looked to, uh, Willett Hoffman, they're very qualified in the, the roadway design market, and so, uh, with that, we look to have them design, uh, what everybody's gonna see, so the sidewalks, curb road, um, profile of the road, and the storm sewer, so, uh, with that, uh, we also plan to use our motor fuel tax, uh, to pay for the engineering, and so, uh, the staff would request that council enter into a contract with Willett Hoffman for the design of the roadway for the Adams Avenue project, uh, their fee is three hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Questions?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
My question is pretty basic, uh, is this, uh, the going rate for something like this, the standard rate, or what you would s- consider it a customary rate for this large of a project?
Yes, this is right about ten percent, depending on where the estimate comes in, which I think would fall in line with, uh, the, the general idea of what this design should go for.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Busker.
I move we adopt, uh, resolution R twenty nineteen thirty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion, council? Then before you is, um, a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Mysek to adopt resolution twenty nineteen thirty-three, madam clerk, could you please take the roll?
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Brashaw?
Aye.
Mysek?
Aye.
Berberay?
Aye.
Borneman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
And Ross?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Item number twelve is the adoption of resolution twenty nineteen thirty-four, could you please read this?
Resolution of the city of Freeport authorizing and approving an agreement with Fair Graham to provide water and sewer design engineering services for the Adams Avenue project, again Clark to South Streets.
And Director Carr.
Yes, thank you, madam mayor, um, as I stated, uh, during this last resolution, uh, we covered this at the last committee of the whole, um, the difference being this is for the utility work, uh, we reached out to Fair Graham, they've taken care of our, uh, water system plan and our water, or... sanitary sewer facility plan, I believe is what it's called, um, so they're familiarity with our utilities in that area and our design process and our push for the I E P A loan forgiveness, uh, kinda made them our selection for this, so, uh, this project's a little bit longer than the other one, just due to, uh, the const- where our good and bad water main and sanitary sewer are in this location, um, so staff does request that council enter into a contract with Fair Graham for the design of the water and sewer utilities for the Adams Avenue project, uh, for a fee of two hundred and fifty-five thousand.
And you said that was paid out of motor fuel as well?
This will be paid for out of our water capital fee.
Questions, council?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you, you said this will be paid out of the water capital improvement fund that we set up the eight-eight-eight fund?
Though, this is the, the capital improvement fund that we pay for, uh, as residents with our water bills.
Right, and the amount is two hundred and fifty-five thousand?
Yes.
And that covers, um, a hundred and sixty thousand for the water main replacement design, and ninety-five thousand for the sanitary sewer replacement design, is that correct? That's what I had before me?
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you, madam mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adoption of resolution R dash twenty nineteen dash thirty-four, as stated.
Second.
Alderman Berberay.
Thank you, madam mayor, uh, Director Carr, just out of curiosity, uh, how do these two firms work together on this significant project, what is the time, who develops the timetable and going forward, who's doing what, is there, either of these are the lead on the project, Adams Street product or project?
So, uh, if this contract is approved, um, Fair Graham's gonna start out and they're gonna survey everything, um, so, once they get the survey limit set and they get all the survey information, and they're gonna kick it over to Willett Hoffman, who's then gonna have to set our vertical profile of the roadway, um, so once that vertical is set on the roadway, then the sanitary and the water main can start to be designed, um, and so, Willett Hoffman will have the final set of plans that goes to I dot, so they would essentially be the lead firm.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? We have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Parker, to move, uh, to adopt resolution twenty nineteen thirty-four, madam clerk, could you please take the roll?
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Brashaw?
Aye.
Mysek?
Aye.
Berberay?
Aye.
Borneman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
And Ross?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you, item number thirteen is the adoption of resolution twenty nineteen thirty-five, could you please read this?
Resolution of the city of Freeport authorizing and approving an agreement with Fair Graham to provide services to complete the HUD section fifty-eight environmental review process for Westview Apartments.
Manager Crowe.
Thank you, madam mayor, uh, so we were approached by the housing authority, uh, and, uh, HUD to conduct an environmental study, uh, as the engine, as the oversight, uh, for the housing authority, uh, at, uh, for Westview Housing, so they can go forward and do demolition of certain properties out of the Westview Housing, they had asked us to contract it, this is for thirty-eight hundred dollars as we go forward, and that, they are going to, uh, thirty-five hundred, excuse me, and they are going to reimburse us once this environmental, and if, uh, there's any particular questions about that project, I see, uh, Babat's in the audience, too.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you, um, manager Crowe, just so I understand correctly, um, the city of Freeport owns the land, and the Freeport Housing Authority is basically federal entity that looks over it, and that's why they're helping us do it?
The housing authority runs the housing, and, and we're, we're responsible for the land, therefore they've asked us to do the environmental study, there was an environmental study done when, two thousand and twelve, and they, they feel that environmental study is too old to be used for going forward, so they've asked us to update that environmental study.
Thank you, manager Crowe.
Alderman McLanathan.
Um, is this generally considered kind of a one-off, uh, this is, we're not generally gonna be getting involved?
No, that, that, once we get the environmental study, this then turns over to the housing authority to take the actions and bid out for the demolition, as we're going forward, we're strictly looking at the land and the environmental study.
Alderman Brashaw, did you have something further you wanted to ask?
No, I, I, I think that's been answered in full, I guess I'll make an emotion to adopt resolution R dash twenty nineteen dash thirty-five.
Second.
Further discussion? Further discussion? Then before you, council, is a motion made by Alderman Breschaw, seconded by Alderman Busker for resolution twenty nineteen thirty-five. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Breschaw?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornhaman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
And Ross?
Aye.
And that resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number fourteen is the adoption of resolution twenty nineteen thirty-six. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving grant from Illinois Housing Development Authority, I D A, from the abandoned residential property municipal relief program.
Director Zupkov.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, in May, the city was notified, we were awarded thirty-seven thousand dollars as part of the abandoned properties program round four, the funds of which are used to acquire and demolish properties. And approving this resolution is required procedural step before final award of the grant funds is completed, and we'd ask for approval of this resolution.
Counsel?
Your Honor?
Alderman, uh, Breschaw?
Thank you, Director Zupkov, thirty-seven thousand dollars is a great amount of money. Thank you for doing this grant and for your hard work involved with this. How many properties do you reckon this will cover?
At least two, maybe three. That always depends how the bids come in, but that's, it'll be somewhere between two or three houses.
And just for council's information, in comparison to the other downstate communities outside of Chicago and Coller Counties, we were actually, were awarded the most money out of, uh, all of the communities outside of Chicago area, Chicagoland area.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Breschaw.
So, are, we're not looking anymore for the hundreds of thousands of dollars? We're grateful to get the thirty-seven thousand, is that what I'm to understand?
The, the maximum for this grant was seventy-five. As Manager Crowe mentioned, none of the downstate communities, I believe, received that much. Uh, you know, millions of dollars of this program are, um, are for Chicago, Cook County, and the Coller Counties, and then, you know, the downstate communities get amounts that are approximately this much or even less.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Alderman Breschaw.
Um, I guess there aren't any other questions. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution R dash twenty nineteen dash thirty-six.
Second.
Okay, then we have a motion made by Alderman Breschaw, seconded by Alderman Mysick to adopt resolution twenty nineteen thirty-six.
Parker?
It was Parker?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm calling the roll.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
I did not wait for you to say to do it. I apologize.
You're okay, go ahead.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Breschaw?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornhaman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
And Ross?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Okay, item number fifteen is a motion to approve a, a proposal from the U.S., um, Bancorp for leasing, the financing for the hook lift trucks. Director Carr.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, a few councils ago, we opened up, or we, uh, we went over the, the bids for the hook lift trucks. Benel was selected and awarded the contract, um, that, we decided to put it out for bid for the leasing of the products, uh, for the hook lift trucks themselves. Uh, we received three from Midwest, State Bank, and U.S. Bank. Uh, U.S. Bank was the low bidder with a two-point-four-seven percent interest rate and quarterly payments of twenty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents over seven years. Staff requests that council enter into a lease agreement with U.S. Bank for the leasing of our two hook lift trucks.
Questions, council?
Uh, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Bornhaman?
Thank you. Uh, I, I know we've covered this, like you said, at other meetings, but this is a, it's a lot of money. What exactly is the purpose of having, what is the need for us to have these trucks?
So, the, the two hook lift trucks are gonna act, uh, twofold. They're gonna have ten-yard capacities as, uh, V-box spreaders. So, instead of the, the normal five-yard or ten-yard style dump box that we have right now, these are gonna sit as a V and it's gonna be a belt fed on the bottom. So, it'll allow us to use both, uh, hot mix asphalt in the back, so we can run the conveyor back out to our paver as well as salt, uh, without stopping in the middle of highway, raising our box up, moving forward, stopping, so that salt will settle back. This'll keep us moving, uh, while we're paving, as well as keep us moving while we're, uh, doing snow removal. And then, the other body that, that this also purchases are gonna be the two leaf vacuums. So, it's gonna take two of our leaf machines out of service that we currently have, uh, and it's gonna replace them with these two that we're gonna have put in. So, these will have a lot more capacity than what, what we currently have.
And it replaces two of our outgoing dump trucks. Our, our dump trucks are all fifteen years and older, and we actually have some that are over twenty years old.
Yep, this is gonna replace two trucks that are, were made in nineteen ninety-eight.
Madam Mayor, just one more. So, you would definitely consider this, uh, an upgrade on behalf of the city moving forward?
Yes, uh, for an all-season.
All-seasons. Thank you, that's all I have.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
How many of these, um, hook lift trucks are we purchasing under this?
Two.
And we are, um, replacing the function of four current, uh, vehicles with these two? Is it two on the?
Yeah, it'd be two trucks and then two leaf machines as well.
Two leaf machines, we're replacing four.
And all, and those four vehicles, the newest of which was fifteen years old, and how, how old did you say that one was? Nineteen, did you say nineteen eighty-eight?
The, the two five-yard trucks were from nineteen ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight.
Yep.
The, the leaf machines are both over?
Two thousand and five.
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Ross.
Yes, uh, Director Carr, can you explain to them how much more safer it's gonna be to use these trucks compared to the equipment that you have right now today? When it comes to transferring, transferring the one box to the other box?
So, the way that the hook lift truck works is, so the, the apparatus or the hook lift machine will be sitting, or I guess the, the, the leaf vacuum will be just sitting on the ground, um, on its own skid. So, it'll be sitting there, and so, the truck actually has a arm that's kinda similar to if you've seen, uh, how something will pick up a dumpster, like those trucks, it has a hook that'll reach back and, and can actually grab it on the ground and pull it up itself. So, it becomes a one-man job to take that leaf machine and pull it up onto a truck, instead of having to take either another piece of equipment to come over and pick up the leaf box and put it in the back of the truck.
The, the other thing is, is part of the leaf pickup, you go to being controlling, you still have to do two-person, 'cause in case something gets stuck in it. But now, the picking up of the leaves, the guys are not actually handling the leaf pickup. It's controlled inside the cab. It's, so it's, it's safer, uh, the second person's there strictly if it gets claw, if there's, somebody drops a, uh, branch in, into it, so it's.
Pumpkin?
Pumpkin, yeah, it reduces, basically, it reduces our guys' exposure, uh, at there. And what's nice about the spreader is we, as he said, we don't have the issue with, uh, we have, they can spread over a larger, longer time. This is the, this is the latest technology. These were introduced on the market three years ago, uh, as replacements, and more and more municipalities are going to these.
Madam Mayor. Alderman Mysick.
Are there plans to take the current, um, equipment out of service and sell?
So, the, the two trucks that are from nineteen ninety-eight, um, I don't know how much of a market there's gonna be for that. We'll still have one nineteen ninety-eight left, uh, running, so, we may use it for parts. Uh, we may declare it a surplus and try to sell it. We might see what kind of market it is for that. Um, the leaf machines themselves, I know we're gonna at least keep them for at least another year or two, uh, just in case the two that we will have running break down. That'll give us, uh, another one that we can kinda sub in and out. But, in, in the end, yes, we will be declaring it a surplus and trying to sell them.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Was there further discussion? Then we have, uh, a motion made by Alderman Breschaw, seconded by Alderman Ross, for the approval of the lease financing. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Breschaw?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornhaman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
And Ross?
Aye.
Motion is, uh, uh, motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is department head reports, finance.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I just have a quick report that we did receive our first installment of property taxes last week, so it's really helping out the cash flow. That's all I have for tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Community development.
I have no report tonight, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and public works?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Street crews have completed their paving of Shawnee, um, so, uh, the ride's pretty good. You get a chance to take a, to make, take a swing over there and kinda, a little pride in our work. I thought they did a real good job. They've begun milling on E B over by, um, fire station over there by Carl Sandberg School. Um, looks like we're gonna have that milled out tomorrow. So, we'll be paving that, and then our utility service cuts from our water main for the rest of the week. And then, uh, since Tom's not here, uh, the update on Float Street. Since we started at State Street, no, South Street, not State Street, so since we started on South, um, we're getting pretty close to Jefferson. But it also means that we're about to get into where the rock was the first time through on the sanitary sewer, so that may slow us down quite a bit. But, uh, with luck on our side, we may miss that rock and pursue straight through.
Well, we hope so. Thank you. Fire?
My first report, um, we had a great week at the fair. Uh, nothing, uh, significant occurred that, uh, was beyond our capacity to take care of. Uh, we did have a fire, um, uh, over the weekend, a trailer fire at the Snack, uh, company, uh, which we extinguished after an extensive overhaul. Took us about five hours to get that fire out, um, with all the feed and, uh, materials that was in it. But, um, our crews performed admirably, and I appreciate all their hard work. Nothing else to report today.
Thank you. Police?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just let, what, the chief said that, uh, the Steamson County Fair, um, went off and, uh, we handled everything up there, but I just wanted to recognize all the volunteers, uh, the auxiliary police, um, the sheriff's reserves, um, a, a lot of, uh, long hours directing traffic, standing on their feet, uh, just a visual, uh, police presence, um, certainly helps. So, I, I just wanna recognize, uh, those folks for really helping out. Now that that's, um, under our belt, now we, we look forward to Cruise Night, so, uh, we're gearing up for that and, and, uh, I'm sure it'll be very successful. That's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. I T. And library?
Good evening. I don't know if this is on. Okay, I hear it. Okay. Um, two, well, three things. One, um, F A C C put a call out last week for more donations through the food pantry, so we, uh, did an impromptu food for fines that we're gonna be running through the end of July. And then we will, um, reassess to see if we wanna keep going with it. Uh, in, for every, um, one item that someone brings in for donated food that's unexpired, we take a dollar off of their overdue fees if they have any on their account. That being said, it does not only have to be donated because you have fines, you can bring things in if you, uh, so choose. Uh, this evening in Debate Square, we're showing the Apollo eleven documentary, so I know you really wanna get through this meeting so that you can go over there and watch the new documentary. And then, um, a very quick stats report, last fiscal year for F Y two thousand and nineteen, we circulated one hundred and thirty-five thousand, twenty-eight items. We answered six thousand, four hundred and ninety-two reference questions. We have thirteen, over thirteen thousand library cards active, and we had three hundred and fifty-one programs with four thousand, seven hundred and fifteen in attendance. So, that is all.
Thank you very much. And, um, one more for department heads, assistant to the city manager.
Mayor, um, also my first update, uh, so, to start off the, oh, yeah, sorry. The pre-disaster mitigation grant, we delivered handouts, the, uh, a few weeks ago to residents and property owners, um, just reminding them that we're reapplying for the grant. And, um, we've had at least ninety property owners sign up, um, within the last year, so since we started it in twenty eighteen. And, um, the number is increasing daily, so, within the past few weeks, we've probably gotten at least twenty, uh, people coming in. And so, thirty of the ninety property owners, um, at, or at least thirty, we need to confirm with them still. Um, those are the people that have signed up in twenty eighteen, and we just have to reach out to them and make sure that they're still interested in the grant. Uh, I'm coming up with a database of all of these addresses and properties, at least seventy of the ninety people who have indicated that they're interested. Um, there are structures on their lots, and as of right now, the numbers that I've come up with, at least twenty-two of those properties are residential. And then, other than that, the Complete Count Committee, we've met twice so far. Uh, we're signed up with the U.S. Census Bureau now, and, um, I'll be attending, along with a few other members, a training session in Rockford that the Region One Planning Council is holding next week. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next week, the, uh, Keystone, I know we approved the variance, will be holding their, uh, public hearing for approval, uh, of their solar, um, as required by ordinance. The state has also informed us that they're coming out, uh, the first week in August to inspect the site. We expect work to start, say, either the second or third week, uh, in August out at the site, so as we move forward. Um, I know that, uh, I wanna recognize, uh, Todd Barklow. I, I know we, he's gonna be here for, uh, one more meeting, but this is actually his official meeting. I wanna thank him for all of his outstanding service and work. It's been a pleasure working with you for the last two and a half years, uh, and he, if everything works right, he'll be going on to bigger and better things. I know he has a, so, uh, it, it's, uh, it's been a pleasure, Todd, and I wanna thank you for everything you've done for Freeport.
We can all echo that as well, chief. And then, uh, to also piggyback on what you said, chief, earlier about Cruise Night, um, it takes many volunteers to make that happen. So, if you have not yet signed up for an hour or two, to volunteer your time in helping with that event, it is greatly needed. So, uh, that's actually the second Saturday in August, coming up quickly. So, council reports, uh, Alderman Parker?
Yes, two things, couple of things. One is, I did drive Shawnee today, and it does, it's really nice. It's unbelievable. Uh, the other thing is, when are they in, when's the start date for Woodside Drive?
So, I've, I've reached out to both Civil and Dunn. Um, they're waiting on a couple of jobs to kinda stack up in this area before they're coming in. So, it, it sounds like it's going to be, uh, at least after August ninth, and so, once that comes around, then they're, and they'll let me know.
Okay. And I was thinking, this is Todd's last meeting, so, um, other than his reception that night, so, I just wanna personally and publicly thank him so much. I was there when Todd started, and he's been a great asset to the department, and, um, wish him good luck in the future. Congratulations.
Alderman Busker.
A couple of things this evening. One, kinda went fast through the department heads, so I got one question for public works. You brought up the Float Street project. How successful are we gonna be about removing the dip at Float and Jefferson?
It's gonna go away.
Okay. And the only other thing I have is, uh, Fifth Ward Neighborhood Watch Meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock at, uh, First Church of the Nazarene at Carolyn Empire.
Thank you. Alderman Breschaw.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On July, July eleventh, Sixth Ward, we had a neighborhood watch meeting. Didn't have a great turnout. I mean, we had enough people to show up, uh, that, uh, had a lot of questions. But Kurt Sutman, our I T director, did a wonderful job presenting how to text City of Freeport. I had so many positive comments regarding that, and several emails following up from the people that were there asking for this information. So, I'm going to repeat that performance without him. Um, I'm going to bring his flyers and re-present it to my next neighborhood watch meeting in September. But I'm just here to encourage, I'm trying to encourage the other alderpersons to also, uh, follow through with this program. Um, I'm not trying to make poor Kurt to spend all his evenings at neighborhood watch meetings, but this is very, very important for the City of Freeport, for the constituents to understand how easily it is to text on a smartphone, the City of Freeport with a one-word problem. And it, it, um, guides you through a, a couple of questions and asks you the, like, the location of where a pothole is, or where a tree branch is, or whatever. It's very, very simple. Again, I T director Kurt Sutman, thank you so much for your presentation. Again, I T Director Kurt Suttonman, thank you so much for your presentation, and I am going to photocopy the information you gave me, so I have multiple handouts for my next meeting as well. That's it.
Thank you. Alderman Misick.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just to follow up on Alder Person Brasshaw's comments, uh, the number for the city text feature, Text My Gov, is eight one five two four zero two one six nine. Again, that's eight one five two four zero two one six nine. I also want to note, uh, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth of July, there is a Seventh Ward Neighborhood Watch at Central Fire, corner of South and Walnut. Uh, and also I'd like to share my, my sentiments and thanks to Chief Todd uh, for his many years of service, and that really the pleasure it is to, uh, to serve with him, and, uh, really his, his service to the community over the years. Thank you, Todd.
And Alderman Berberay.
I would like to echo the sentiments regarding Police Chief. One of the things I was most impressed with when I was, uh, brought on board here was, uh, the tour. Uh, very, very impressive going through your department. Uh, just, just, that was very enjoyable. Thank you. That's all.
Alderman Borneman.
Uh, thank you. First off, I need to, uh, announce again, there will not be the First Ward Watch Meeting this month as scheduled. They'll be, it will get rescheduled, I'll get that out there sooner, uh, than later. Um, and secondly, um, if people are, I'm, I'm gonna thank Mr. Barklow, Chief Barklow, regardless, I know everybody else already has, I don't care. Uh, I really want to thank you, uh, and just, it was an opportunity to work with you, I was really disappointed to hear that, that, uh, you decided to retire, I understand that your, uh, your son's starting up in football, and, uh, I don't blame you there, it'd be a pretty great opportunity to go see him play. Um, just my time, uh, working with you, I've really, um, it's just you, you, you come off and, and it, you really are, you're a great leader. Uh, you're someone who just cares about the community. Some of the things the Police Department, I think, uh, has achieved under your leadership, uh, we have the, an S V U detective, we, we have a, a commu- a, a department that has body worn cameras, which is, is not a common thing, especially in, I mean, you look at bigger cities and they don't even think about them. Um, we were on that early, and that, that was great. Uh, we have two K nine units now, um, we spearheaded some of the blight and, uh, uh, getting, getting lights to better, uh, neighborhoods over there on the, on the Third Ward. Uh, we have a investigator in the F B I Task Force, we have, we're part of the State Line Area Narcotics Team. Uh, we have an investigator who's part of the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. All of our officers are equipped with Narcan, and it is used, uh, more than I think the general public has any idea. Yeah, and that's just something that is, uh, beyond beneficial for our community. Lot of lives saved there, uh, because of that. Um, and then we have the gang unit, who's really, um, you know, those guys are hard, hardworking guys who take their, a lot of pride in their work, so, um, I think that's a sign of great leadership, so I appreciate, uh, your time, uh, your experience here, we're gonna miss you. And just to touch on, um, the, the good memory I have about you is when we, I was working and I came to you about the amount of retail thefts at Walmart, and, uh, B B guns kept getting stolen, and we talked about, you know, how are we gonna get this fixed? Uh, we spoke to Walmart, and, uh, it just shows that you were somebody who doesn't just, uh, you know, you care about, care about the people in the community, and, you know, so we worked together, we got a letter, we spoke to Walmart, and, um, the next week, those guns, the B B guns were behind a locked, uh, I don't want to say cage, but, display, and we didn't have the, we literally were seeing those same reports once a week, and we went to never having them there, so that's a huge thing for the community. Uh, we're gonna miss you, but, uh, we wish you the best, and thanks a lot for your time.
Alderman, Alderman McLean with him.
Thank you. Um, a couple, a couple more mundane items first. Um, I had some questions, uh, in regards to the contracts, uh, when they're talking about fur trash, man, and, uh, we, we didn't have a chance to really talk about, have questions on the, because we went pretty fast, as I think someone else said on there. So, um, on the, on the toters, um, those are gonna be universal, if there's not like an opt-out provision in regards to toters, is that correct?
That's correct. I've actually had some questions about that, um, this, this is gonna be universal out, and it's, it's actually the industry standard. More and more communities are going, are, in fact, Mooreing told us that we are the last community there, that they are still doing, uh, that don't have, that does not have toters, uh, in their, um, and then Waste Connections, which Gills is under, uh, is going, uh, as they're renewing every one of their contracts, they're forcing, uh, their, um, their communities to go to toters.
And as we move forward on that, um, and I remember you saying that during our initial discussion, that's where the last one of that group that doesn't have it, I assume that they'll have some best practices for, um, those of our constituents who are saying, how are we gonna be able to do X, or how do we do Y, so we can make that as smooth a transition as possible?
In fact, uh, I'm working with a, a different group that's putting together a flyer that will be going out, that's gonna be talking about not only, uh, toters, but about what's going, the changing market in recycling, changing market in trash. Uh, they met with me, uh, today.
Um, I wanted to go back to demos too, um, uh, between you and the, the Director as well on that. Um, I know, obviously, we've got, that there's potential plans and things of that for, um, pre-disaster mitigation and what's gonna happen in, in regards to that. This thirty-seven will be a couple houses, maybe three if we were lucky, on the, on the bids on there. Where do we stand as to the, the, kind of the, the soft list of houses that are either need to be brought down, or significantly in danger of being brought down?
So what we've done is, uh, our intern that we brought on this summer has identified and worked with, uh, Ben and the Code Enforcement, we've identified a hundred and ninety-nine properties that are either vacant or, uh, or condemned, uh, throughout the city. Now, of those properties, uh, the Land Bank is identifying which one of the properties, uh, that they can use. They've, right now, so far, that, that they can purchase, they believe can be turned, they've identified eighteen of those properties that are, uh, savable. The other ones, we're going to be, uh, we're looking at the money that we're receiving in from the sales of properties as what is available. However, we're kind of ho- on hold right now because we want, yeah, there, our focus is to get some of the properties down east of the Pecatonic, and we're still waiting for the environmental and historic review from the state to give us the money that we have from the abandoned properties, uh, east of the Pec.
So once we have, um, and this, I guess, continue my comments section, but I, I guess, uh, what, what, we look at some answers furthermore on the east of the Pec. Um, we look at what the Land Bank can do. We should have a pretty good chunk of, um, of what, what remaining properties we have, um, and then we will be in a situation to start looking at funding at the end, because we went through a pretty aggressive stretch, and this is kind of a little bit of a lull.
And we ran into, so, one of the reasons why we, uh, were, the state wanted us to get into the Land Bank and, uh, actually encouraged us to, we had some issues in the management of the demoing of the properties through, uh, I H D A and turning in, uh, Illinois, uh, and turning those documents in, so we, we were basically told by the state to reset what we were doing. Uh, and, uh, we're, we've now gotten that reset, this first round of A P P money since that has reset. But we've also, uh, thanks to Andrew, Director Zabkoff, and some of the work that his guys are doing, we now have best practices as we are going forward for identifying what are emergency tear downs, uh, what are requiring asbestos removal. We're also working to get lead, uh, Ben, uh, our, uh, Building Inspector, uh, asbestos and lead abatement certified, so that he, we don't have to spend money, uh, to, we can, uh, to get the inspections done, we can just hire somebody, uh, to go forward. So these are all procedures that we're, we're taking to move this process forward. We did not, you know, I, I've been here two and a half years, a little under two and a half years. One of the things I've been driving, uh, Andrew, is to get this database. We did not have a good database. Ben was condemning homes, we knew he had vacant homes, we knew he had homes without water. We now have that database, and that allows us, and we're consistently looking at that, and I will say that was one of the reasons we brought in an M, the M P A intern, and she, she's been focusing on that this summer. So we now, in fact, uh, we've been identified by the state and, and Region One as having the most, uh, comprehensive view and knowing where our properties are. We are also, uh, uh, to prevent additional properties, we are in the process of getting a, uh, additional, uh, grant that will allow, uh, homeowners in a particular area in the city to put money back into their homes, so it's preventing even further demoing.
And along those lines also, um, in addition to that supplemental, um, steps on that, uh, from the, from an inspection standpoint, do I, what, did I read correctly some of your prior stats, that we're basically triple, uh, the, um, the inspections or the site visits that we have year over year?
From three years ago, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, from, from last year, from May of last year to May of this year, it was a three hundred percent increase, and, um, you know, I, I haven't, we, we, of course, got I Works in April of last year, so that's, that's kind of where we hit the reset button, because E N R Gov, which we used prior, didn't, didn't track nearly as well as I Work, so it was kind of, you know, ground zero in April of last year, and we kind of have to measure from there going forward, so you know, we've been measuring April to April and May to May, and that's where we saw those increases, and it's been similar for June and July. But, uh, twenty nineteen is actually gonna be the first calendar year that we'll have had I Works for the, for, for the entire year, so it'll, it'll kind of be a good yearly benchmark we can, you know, we can measure ourselves against moving forward.
And, and it does allow us to establish benchmarks for all of these programs. So we have, within Community Development, they are the first department where we've actually established benchmarks for demos, for inspections, for nuisance within. Andrew and I have worked on establishing those benchmarks, so we can measure from year to year and establish what we're going forward. This is something, uh, that we really have, uh, really pushed and fo- done the focus over the last, uh, two years going forward.
And I appreciate that, and I look forward to seeing how these steps, the database, the more professional, um, benchmarks on it will be able to help us as we're moving forward. Um, I appreciate that kind of snapshot as to where we're at on here. Um, I do want to take a moment also, um, and to say thank you to Todd, the Chief, um, in many ways, um, in, in, in many aspects, both from working with you back in the State's Attorney's Office, working with your guys in the State's Attorney's Office, to working with you here, um, uh, on an Alderman basis. Um, Eric ran through a lot of the lists on it, um, and, uh, the, the impact that they've had over the years. Um, I think, uh, another measure of appreciation is, there's, um, you could say there's many people i- in your line of work, you know, there's many people that may not be happy with everything that's done on a given situation, um, or may not be happy with something as a whole, um, but I, I can't recall anybody, um, in, in, in either setting, State's Attorney's Office or in this setting, that ever had, um, a bad word to say about Chief, uh, personally, in regards to, to the person you were, um, and, um, I appreciate that, and obviously, I appreciated, um, uh, working with you, but also getting to know you over the years, so, thank you. I wish you very well, and, uh, don't be a stranger.
Okay.
Alderman Ross.
This is my turn. No, uh, I'd just like to say, uh, we have a Third Ward Neighborhood Watch, uh, that will be this, um, Thursday, the eighteenth, orbit the B F W at six P M. Only thing I have to say, uh, Chief, Todd, we gotta find a new Scott. That's all I gotta say. Yeah.
Okay, that leaves us with item number twenty, which is public comment. Tommy.
Todd Barker, we're gonna miss you, and would, and you did a good job at, uh, with that, when you went to the banquet, and, and who's gonna take your place? So we're gonna miss you and hope you, I'll see you sometime.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, item number twenty-one is Executive Session. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
Pursuant to five I L C S one twenty slash two C eleven, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. Pursuant to five I L C S one twenty slash two C twenty-one, discussion of minutes lawfully closed under this act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section two point zero six. Thirdly, pursuant to five I L C S one twenty slash two C one, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public, public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity.
Thank you. Is there a motion to enter into Executive Session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Ross. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Misick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Borneman.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
And Ross.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.